The board, Barb, the role?
Mr. Beveridge. Mr. Boyd. Mr. Connell.
Here.
Mrs. Felter.
Here.
Mr. Kuhn.
Here.
Mrs. Steele.
Here.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Here. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under our universal liberty and justice for all.
I think we've got Dr. McMullin to read a statement. Or we can skip that.
That's not.
Yeah. It was on the agenda, so I thought, you know.
Okay, check.
All right, we'll move on to section two, action consent. If anybody has a question, feel free to pull something off. Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve consent agenda items 2.01 to 2.24 as presented.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Felter sent by Mr. Kuhn.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right, motion carries five zero. Moving on, action bids, contracts, and agreements. And I think here, at least for 3.01, is that Dr. McMullin and Mr. Keiger. Maybe just talk a little bit about the crisis alert notification system.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the crisis alert system. We're excited to bring to the district. Thought we'd just do a brief overview of the program. And basically, what the crisis alert system is, is a wearable badge that's issued to every district employee. So administrators, teachers, classified staff, secretaries, custodians, food service, everyone. It's worn just behind your badge. And it's got a little button on it that allows any employee to request assistance from their campus responders at any time on any of our campuses. It's basically a one-button activation. Someone, Mr. Keiger's going to go into detail in terms of the two options that this badge provides in terms of types of service. But the location accuracy is a big piece of this product that we're very excited about. When someone summons an alert, it instantly pulls up to the campus responders exactly where that person is. So it could be as specific as room 2210 in Late the Northwest High School, shows that exact location. Provides total campus coverage, so parking lots, playgrounds, district activity complexes, et cetera. And then the other piece is, it's nice, it's got an audio and visual notification. So many times throughout the district, as we've had different issues come up, sometimes there's some areas where it's hard to hear the PA, whether that's a band, classroom, some of your performing arts, theater, sometimes the gym. And so there's a visual notification component to this as well. And I'll let Mr. Keiger kind of walk you through the two options.
Thank you, and good evening. So just want to touch base real quick on a couple of the options. So what this badge does is it will give all of our staff the ability to do two different things with the badge. What's going to be utilized 99% of the time is what we call the staff alert. So the staff alert basically is a three press of this badge. So you press that button three times, and that's what's going to send the signal to our Bluetooth beacons that will be throughout the building, signifying that a staff member needs help. And we'll talk about what some of those reasons are that a staff member might use that. But it's going to be basically your medical situations, or if there's disturbance of some kind, that just basically needs to be handled by the principal, or the SRO, or the nurse, or what have you. So that's what's going to be used more times than not. The other feature that this badge has is the ability to do a campus lockdown. So in the worst-case scenario, if a staff member sees a situation, whether it's a weapon on campus or something that requires to put the building in lockdown, then we're going to ask that staff member just to continue pressing that button. After, basically, they're going to press it until they see that the building go into lockdown. Those same beacons that we're going to put up throughout the building also have, they light up. And then it also has the ability to take over the intercom as well as computer screens, virtually notifying everybody in the building that there's a situation that we need to be in lockdown for, and we need to get behind a closed door. So again, that badge functions for both of those reasons. When the staff alert is pressed, like you see there, the map is going to pop up to the campus responders. So again, at the secondary level, it's going to be our SROs, our principals, our nurse. They're going to get a map of the building, and there are going to be a flashing red dot of exactly where in their building that person needs help. It's also going to say that person's name as well. So that admin team or SRO is going to know exactly who needs help and exactly where they are. And then it gives them the ability to respond accordingly. In the lockdown feature, it virtually works the same. However, when they keep pressing the button, they're going to press it until they see those visual cues and those beacons lighting up red. That's going to go throughout the building. The computer screens, again, like you see there on your screen, are going to pop up lockdown. And that's going to be a message that we cater and that fits our nomenclature. But then that way, any desktop computer that's on is going to see that, any mobile device connected to the network is going to see that. So that could be a substitute teacher in the building, that could be an itinerant staff member that maybe is normally in that building. They're going to be notified. There's going to be beacons, restrooms, people are going to know. So again, like Dr. McMullin said, if there's somebody in the gym, or the band room, or a place that you might not always hear something, but there's other methods to make sure we get the message out. It also has the capability to go directly to the authorities if we choose to utilize that function. So that's, again, very customizable, that we can do it how we see fit here in our district. The other piece I really like about it is our campus responders. So again, our admin team, our SROs, district administrators will have that app on their phone. And what that will do is it will allow anybody that has that app to also put that, put a building in the lockdown. For example, if Late the PD were to call me and think we've got a situation at a certain school, and we need to put your folks on restricted, instead of taking the time to find the number, call the school, hope they answer on time, you know, we can just pull out our, any one of us can pull out an app on our phone and press the button. And then maybe we'll have the lights to flash green and let the building know, or blue, that, hey, we're in restricted right now. And that will also come over the intercom as well. So it's just a way to expedite that information sharing, so we can get our staff and students into a safe spot. I'll let Dr. McMullin go.
And basically, we break down by level of things that you will see most likely on a weekly basis in our schools to where staff be able to summons help at the elementary level. Everything from elopements to medical emergencies, special needs calls for help, playground accidents. And then also, as Mr. Keiger alluded to, the panic button for active shooter, intruder. Secondary level, many of those same things, but also sometimes you ramp up to fights or classroom disruptions, suspicious activity, injury in athletic event, as again, it'll go out to our football fields and tracks, other places, et cetera. So really excited about the instant communication that it provides. Benefits, pretty self-explanatory, but basically, it puts the power in each staff member's hands to summon help. It also, for the first time in our district, allows any staff member to put a building on lockdown, which we think is important. Many times, time can be of the essence, and waiting for the principal or an administrator to make that decision can be certainly concerning. So giving that power to the staff, we think is really important. Response time obviously is drastically reduced. The location accuracy is just incredible. I mean, down to the actual spot in the school. And again, it also alerts us to who pushed the button as well. So you know who to look for when you're responding. And then again, the feeling of safety and connection by staff. The other districts that Mr. Keiger and I have visited with, which have more than eight different districts around the country that have this, just swear by it, and they say basically their staff just feels so empowered and so much safer having this. And I've really praised the response time by their building administration, SROs, counselors, school nurse, because you're getting a lot of support anytime you need help as a staff. So that's a brief overview of this, and we'd certainly both stand for any questions that the board may have.
Before we do that, I wonder if you wouldn't mind two things. You and I talked about the backup the other day, I think it was a Wi-Fi backup, if I remember right, that you and I talked about. So maybe you could visit about that. And then I wonder just also if you would share a couple of the stories that you shared with myself in terms of your visit to the school districts and the kinds of things that they saw, not necessarily related to active shooter, but just supporting staff in moments of need.
Yeah, so as we said, the system runs off of Bluetooth and obviously is connected to our system, Wi-Fi. But if the Wi-Fi were to go down in a building, there is a cellular backup that kicks in on this product. So there is always coverage in our buildings while we have students and staff in our buildings. The second piece is a few of the stories we heard from other districts, real-life examples. In, I believe it's Fallujah County, Florida, had a bus driver that had finished their route, went back to the bus barn, had a heart attack, hit the button three times, and it alerted the response team. They got out there and were able to get an AED out there and save the staff members' lives. There was another incident in another district where a child had swallowed a rock on the playground. As we know, elementary kids eat about anything, including rocks. And this child was in dire straits. And but that response time by the nurse was so much quicker, getting that instant alert, they were able to get out there, do the Heimlich, and save the child. And they just had example after example after example situations where it truly made a difference in the school.
One of the things that I love about it and hearing Dr. McMullin and Officer Keiger share those situations is, you know, right now with the walkie-talkie and the intercom, when we have something like that that happens in a school, more often than not, it disrupts the instructional period for the entire school. Because, you know, we have enough walkies around that somebody's hearing what's going on. And certainly, we want to attend to whatever the challenge is. But really, everybody doesn't need to know, and it doesn't need to disrupt the learning day for all of our students and staff. And that's one of the things that I think is pretty incredible about this, that we'll still get help, we'll still get support, but the whole building's not going to be aware that there's somebody on the playground choking. Which I think in terms of just focusing on our mission as education, that's a pretty positive piece, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I have a question that I could ask. When you talk about in the buildings, when, I think when we talk now, so the first thing I want to say is that as a prelude to the community, this has been a conversation for many months. It didn't just happen as of March, it didn't just happen this summer, right? It's something you guys have been working on, embedding the various tools and resources. And there were many different things looked at and reviewed. And one of the reasons that you guys share with us is the power of this, is that every single person that works for the district doesn't become someone with the device. And now we've amplified beyond the SROs and administrators to thousands of key first responders with not having to be an SRO, but capable of letting somebody know there's a need. And that was something, when you guys shared it, was really, really impactful, is that wherever they are. The second thing is with wherever they were, is that it's not just in the buildings. You guys, can you talk a little bit about how it extends to the C-Back and the O-Deck and the football field and those kinds of things? That coaches would have those at those places as well. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because that really moves. You know, you talk a lot of times, I've met you, we're the largest network in the metro area, right? That this is a pretty big deal, and it covers a lot of space. Can you elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah, you know, really, one thing that we were excited about is because we do already have technology out at our activity complexes and, you know, all over our schools. It does allow, so many times, we'll just say Late the North, for instance, there was a C-team soccer team maybe out on the practice field there. And at 4:30 or 5 o'clock, and there's not a ton of people still there, they hit it. They're going to get response really quickly from one of the many first responders there on that staff. So it definitely, it will locate by field, by location. So at C-Back, where you have, you know, eight different fields between baseball, softball, soccer, and football, it'll pinpoint exactly which field needs assistance. And again, that's an instant access that we have not had in the past, and we're really excited about our staff.
Given the distance from the main building, sometimes, you know, my experience is that third of a mile, that's a long way for people to get to. But it's who's closest, and it's really creating a mesh of a team. And that's one of the things that we heard from the community and from your staff across the district was bring us closer together, empower us all to be part of, you know, saving lives or helping each other. And that this, as you guys talked about earlier, is we use these every day, right? That's one of the things, is that it's an everyday thing. Because kids do fall down, and things happen in classes, and teachers do need help. And that was one of the most important things I saw. In the communications, I question in the communicating, right? So if there were a lockdown, right? You have the button, the people will be trained how to use that for lockdown in the building. Who would get the communication at that point in time, or who would initiate the why and the how? And how does that get to the individual staff or substitute staff within the building? Can you talk about how we take this and, you know, add process to it?
So anytime an alert goes off in a building, that building response team will get the alert, obviously. So let's take an elementary school. So principal, counselor, nurse, might be a fifth-grade teacher who's CPR certified, could be the PE teacher, whomever they deem their response team. But also, Mr. Caldwell, Mr. Keiger, and myself will get them here at the district level. And that instantly props the communication of, we're on the phone or radio instantly, hey, what do you have going on? Do you need help from us, et cetera? Obviously, if it is a eight-button panic or a lockdown, that certainly then would prompt a immediate call to the police as well. So it definitely starts that communication piece instantly, and then we just go into our normal protocols at that point in time in terms of who's communicating with the staff, who's working with Maggie and her department on communication for parents, updating obviously the superintendent, the board, all those things. So it really just gets that process rolling that much quicker by having this versus our former protocol.
What is our projected, I like it, so I'm going to vote for it, so I'm going to assume. What's our expected rollout timetable that you all are thinking about?
Yeah, we are, we're ready to start installation here next month with board approval. And so we are extremely confident that we'll have all secondary schools up and running prior to school starting. But Mr. Keiger just updated me earlier today and said that the company really believes they've got a good chance of having every building with students in it ready to go by the first day of school. So if we don't meet that first day of school, it'll be very shortly after. So given that, we will be training all staff during pre-service on this, with the assumption that we are starting day one with school. So it's a very aggressive timeline, but one we think we can meet.
That's terrific. I wanted to thank Dr. Keiger and Dr. McMullin and Mr. Keiger, the responsiveness of all of our teams, having already been in the pipeline, having these conversations and vetting these things, and our ability to be ready for the safety, security, protection of not just the students, but the staff, is very important these days and brings a lot more confidence to the, one of our primary goals of not just educating, but protecting those kids when they're in the buildings and on our facilities. So I wanted to commend you guys. That's amazingly, seems like amazingly fast process, but I know that you all have been working on it for a while.
Since winter break on this product.
And one of the things I would mention, too, that's positive, you know, is really the district's and this team's effort, and also the foresight of the board, that, you know, as we prepare for bond issues and we identify the strands within a bond issue, that, you know, the passage of our bond positioned us well to be able to do this, and the timing worked well. So I appreciate you calling that out. And the other thing, Jim and Brent would never say this about themselves, but we really will be a leader in our region with this product, and, you know, really the first district to put power like this in every single staff member's hand. And kudos to them for really going the extra mile to dig into it, to do all the reference work, to, you know, traveling to Florida to be on the ground and seeing it in action. Those things all take time and effort. And so I also am really proud of the work that these two have done with input of a lot of other people to get this product to the point that it's in front of you all tonight.
I do want to point out to the board, that trip to Florida was not as glamorous as it sounds.
Well, it was about 48 hours, right?
It was quick.
Well, I want to thank you guys for the time and work that you've put in, in your teams, and, yeah, leaders lead, so. Any other questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, thank you, appreciate that. Are there any other questions in section three? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I just wanted to call out that there's a bid for the replacement of AEDs. In my world, that's pretty doggone important. The state of Kansas requires kids to be able to have at least hands-only CPR and AED familiarity. Started in freshman, incoming freshman of 2019 as a state law. And so it's one thing to have them required, but it's also important and valuable. The school district has gone extra the last several years to upgrade and update and add, even bringing in, fall, last November, December, working with a local nonprofit, they had a second AED at the middle school. So from a personal perspective, I love it. I'm happy that we're taking care of these things and keeping these things updated. God forbid we ever use them, but they are there, and people are trained. And that's really important that we, again, it's another thing of leadership, of seeing ahead, paying attention, and being proactive. Because we actually have more AEDs per student than most any school district that I'm aware of in the country. And there's still a lot of school districts in this state that don't have any AEDs. So for, again, those things matter. They're about security, they're about safety, and they're about the well-being of our kids and our adults, so thank you.
Well said. That sounds like you would like to move to approve items 3.01 through 3.07 as presented.
So I move that we adopt action items, action bids, contracts, agreements, 3.1 through 3.7.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mr. Connell, second by Mrs. Steele.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
All right, motion carries five zero. Moving on to action other. If there are questions on 4.01 or 4.02, I'd entertain them now. Otherwise, I would move to maybe just like a quick year-end transaction as we typically do with Mr. Hutchinson.
I have a quick question on the 4.02, technology acceptable use policy. In the student version, the information out there, it does reference the student code of conduct. They were last published in 2021. Does any of this reflect or need to be updated in that? And will that require an upgrade, a new printout? Or a new accessibility on the website stated 2022? I don't know that answer, so that's why I'm asking.
Good evening. The, it does, you're right, it references the code of conduct. I believe that we have on the agenda, just approved and updated code of conduct, I believe it was on there. There is, the code of conduct itself, I say updated, it was more grammatical phrasing in terms of the substance and the offenses, if you will. It's all the same, but the acceptable use policy, the student policy here references it. There's also a piece in this, Mr. Connell, where we added some language related to students who are under an IP who maybe through one thing or another, maybe they just have some iPads that get destroyed or repaired and need to be repaired. And we added some language to deal with those circumstances. Because obviously, if they're damaged and the child is unable to control his or her actions, trying to pass that cost off to the family is best they can do. So that is something that's reflected in the student policy.
And are these updates to existing technology use policies that all the students will sign off on their parents? That they, I've read it, I'm aware of it, these are the consequences if I abuse the technology or if I'm hacking technology. This is something that, are they accountable for signing something that says they are aware of it? So that when they do something wrong?
Yeah, the, well, I know as part of the enrollment process, one of the disclosures that they read is this.
Also want to call that out, just for everybody that's watching, during enrollment, this is important. Yes. We have an amazing investment in technology across the school districts for the staff and the students, and the treatment of that, the taking care of that, using those effectively, not interfering with the classrooms, not interfering with each other. That's really, really important, because we need our teachers to be able to teach without interference of, whether even if it's not even the school technology, the student technologies, we need to really be aware of and emphasize that to everybody, that teachers need to be able to teach, kids need to be able to learn, put those things aside unless they're asked to use those. So it's about doing it right. I just want to make sure I had those two, that point on it, because it's really important to reemphasize, because it's a policy. People need to be aware that they're accountable for it.
Thank you, Mr. Penman.
Good evening. Can't believe a whole year has gone by, and I'm back before you with year-end transfers once again. Just as a reminder, we do this because in order to comply with Kansas law and some of our internal goals. Basically, every month, you receive a treasurer's report. And the activity on that treasurer's report, you, when you accept it, you're accepting transfers. We did that at the beginning of June, but as we end the year, there are additional transfers that occur. That's why we have to bring these forward, and we wait till very close to the end of the month. And thank you for your flexibility on getting the information so late. We have to run seven payrolls. All the summer payrolls have to be run before June 30th, so that, in order for us to make these calculations. I do presentations all the time about how to do a good presentation. And you should never put something up and say, if you could read this, you would see. But in this case, I just want to let the audience know, I'm going to walk this in three separate slides. You have a hard copy, if it helps to follow along. Basically, the yellow highlighted section are the transfers you're approving. And in school finance, almost everything goes through your general fund first, and then gets transferred to the appropriate funds. And I'm going to walk through, though, take advantage of the situation to walk through kind of the changes, some of the major changes in some of our funds as we end this year and begin our budget cycle. You'll notice that federal funds went from like a negative 800 to nearly negative 2.2. That's strictly a timing issue. And if you have the hard copy, I've done a number code off to the side, and the explanation will be down below for your review later on, if you'd like. So this is basically our S R three money. Last time we had an opportunity to draw it down was May, we continue to spend the money. It will arrive early July. So in accounting language, that's just a timing issue. Supplemental general fund is slightly up. Anything that's a two, we can't use. If it's less or more, it just goes and is reduced off of what the levy would be calculated to be next year. We don't have access to it. You'll see several lines, I'll just, I won't point out going forward, but a lot of funds go to 50,000 or 15,000. That's in case we missed the bill, there's a little bit left behind in that fund to pay that bill. So we take it to a bare minimum, and we've always done it around 50. Capital outlay actually increased nearly a million dollars. Part of that was just really trying to clamp down on the projects this year, because we were getting fairly lean in that fund. Food service, you see a large increase from 656 to 4.5 million dollars. I would love to go back and get our 1.3 million dollars back from food service that we basically had loaned them during COVID. The regulations just don't allow it. But that extended summer lunch program that ran all year, where everybody ate free, the reimbursement rates on that are very good. And therefore, they brought their balance back up and even exceeded where it was pre-COVID.
Can I ask a quick question? Just a bit, when you talk about transfer, it's, because moving to a new fiscal year, and I'm just asking, because I don't know, right? Moving to a new fiscal year, we have to make a conscious decision that what these were here are going, we're going to vote that it moves into the new fiscal year so that it can be used, deficits or pluses, either way, right?
No, it's actually about, it's really about the current year, because everything goes to the general fund, and the law says you must spend every dime of your general fund. We have to get them into the funds they belong to. If one was, so to speak, we overspent, and we need, it needs some shoring up. Like, let's say one of those bilingual was only 3,000 dollars left, we might move 47,000 there, so we have a minimum of 50. And then you'll see it sort of winds down to what's left. And we have two choices to that. But it's really about getting everything in line for the end of the year.
Now I understand better.
Sure.
John, would you mention real quick, too, while you're on the food service one, about that money being kind of held separate in terms of statute? That we can't just move that back into staff salaries?
Unfortunately, yes, it's a restricted fund, and it can only be used for food service-type expenditures. In the middle of that page, we have additional funds. I'll talk about special education, you'll see that that went from 4.9 to 3.5. In essence, special education funding, we turn in enrollments on September 20th, and all of our waitings are calculated. It took a long time this year to get our, what's called our audited legal max. And in the end, we lost about a million dollars worth of various waiting, waitings, special ed, at-risk, transportation. It's not errors, really, it's just this type of student doesn't really qualify for that, and it's just adjustments in the books. So we did not transfer as much as we anticipated to special ed. We transferred nearly 25 million dollars here to special ed. We chose not to transfer about 1.4 million, because everything else had balanced out. And we let that go against our balances for this year, in the hopes that we can adjust and bring it back up next year. Cost of levying, that's one that just adjusts the levy. Gifts and grants are slightly down, that's just generally timing. You don't get as big of a gift, and you spent something from the prior year. We have the special liability fund. We consciously were trying to build that up, that last year. We probably have some expenditures coming in the first quarter of the next fiscal year, so we'll still be watching that one closely. Extraordinary growth or BODA, once again, any residual just goes to impact the levy next year. Healthcare reserve, our claims are up about four and a half million dollars this year. I call it kind of the COVID pent-up demand. I call it kind of the COVID pent-up demand. You couldn't go get the colonoscopy, you couldn't get your rotator cuff worked on, so our claims are running a little hot this year, so it impacted our balance. We still have a very strong balance, as you can see, in our health reserve, so there was no concern there. Workers' compensation grew about $350,000. That is because the target keeps moving. We are self-insured in workers' comp, and the Department of Insurance keeps saying, analyzing us and going, we need you to be at $2 million. Then we need you to be at $3 million over the next five years, the reserving. It doesn't matter how much we have in all the other funds, they want it in that one. So we're adding $350,000 a year over the next five years. Textbook and student materials, we had a very large adoption at the end of last year that we thought was going to hit July, but it hit June on our books, and therefore we didn't have as much spent out this year. We had planned it this year, so it kind of came back up. Bond and interest, that is basically through the bond sale, we have premiums on our bond sale go into the bond and interest fund to help pay off the debt. That's why that increased. Special assessment fund, that's just a timing. We did not really raise that levy last year, didn't earn quite as much in revenue, and therefore the expenses are very scheduled out for that. We spent out our bond 2016, we're all done. Makes our accounting a lot easier than juggling multiple ones. And as you can see, we sold a lot of bonds about a month ago, so you see an increase of $277 million. So if you try to summarize all that, we really have two tax money. We have operating money that we can get at, and we have more restricted funds that we can't. Our operating funds are down $1.4 million. Our restricted funds are up $282 million, mainly because of the bond sale. So operating went from 5.3 to 3.9. We haven't impacted our contingency reserve, so we have a good safety net if anything were to change throughout the year. So tonight culminates our fiscal year, after you would hopefully approve these transfers. Just to give you a glimpse of what's coming in the next months, July 14th is when we would have a preliminary, an authorization to notify the county that will exceed our revenue neutral rate, and I'll be explaining it that evening, August 4th. You have to approve some publications for our budget, set the date for our budget hearing. We'll publish that on Saturday, August 20th. We'll have public hearings and budget adoption September 1st in order to meet the deadline to turn in by September 20th.
Questions from Mr. Hutchison?
If I remember correctly from last year, and you did a great explanation a year ago, which I thought was awesome, if you could also, on the July 14th, it says, Nevada County preliminary budget, a BOE, intend to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
Yes.
It's not necessarily that we will, but there is a process and a structure that you described a year ago, if you could do that, remind me, that made sense of, we have to notify them just in case there was a need or something?
Certainly. Certainly. We will calculate a maximum levy that the board could levy, because once we publish, you can go down, you just can't increase from what we publish. So we set it very high, we've actually worked with the county treasurer just on the wording of the letters, because this is the year where everybody will receive an individualized letter telling them the financial impact of our decisions on their tax bill. And the wording is trying to spell very clear, this is a, lack of a better word, worst-case scenario, the greatest impact, but it could change down from there.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
It's important to remind people, not really ask, you have to be there, you can be better, you can never exceed what you publish, right?
And that's same for any public taxing entity as well?
Yes.
So they'll be getting information from not only the school district, city, county, that sort of thing as well?
That's great. Other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hutchison. All right. I would entertain a motion to approve action-
Can I ask a quick question?
I also have one question.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Leo.
The Board of Ed districts, have we ever considered calling them wards? So we're not district within a district? It drives me crazy. If we could do that, I would be thrilled.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we're able to do that. We did do-
That's restricting us.
We did do some checking. I don't remember, to be completely honest with you, but do you remember, John?
Can we check on that?
Sounds like Chris knows, here he comes.
Yeah, I was thinking, when I looked at the state statutes, that Board of Education makes its own definitions of its own boundaries in language, so maybe there's something I missed, too.
Well, and I don't have the authority in front of me, Mrs. Felter, but I did look at this. The statute describes districts, not wards, and I believe for cities and other municipalities, I'm flying off the cock a little bit here, but I looked at this about a month ago, describes wards. So they are distinctions there, just by the statute. I'd have to look at it again, I'm happy to look at it further, but I-
I do know Chris Growle, we had him reach out to the election office, and they did have a conversation, and that's, and I'm sorry, I don't remember more detail, but that's where I got the information from him that we wouldn't be able to call them wards.
It would be better. Thank you. It would.
And since we're talking about the maps, one other thing, I just want to make sure that we call out, this is just a rebalancing. It's based on the state publications of where everybody is.
Census data.
For the bodies that they moved west, Zone 3, in which Julie and I work with, is now slightly overpopulated for the way we would elect going forward. And this is just a normalization and a balancing, because the numbers look 54,000, 57, 52 going forward. It's not political, it's about population representing the community that we all work in, and so it's not like a diminishing of Zone District 3. It's an empowerment of everyone to have equal say and equal access to their board members.
And we would do this each time there's a census, you know, it's the same process. So yeah, that's a good point.
Other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve action items 4.01 to 4.03 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion by Mrs. Felter, a second by Mr. Kuhn.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.